Evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 18th, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I will now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Okay, seeing none, Councilor Kuchar, would you lead us to salute in the flag?
I plead allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conduct the roll call, Councilor Kuchar.
Here.
Councilor Cragan.
Here.
Councilor Cruz.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here remotely.
Councilor Squallia.
Present.
Councilor Van Hasenga. President Zarella. Councilor Boishman.
Here.
Okay, before we address the agenda items before us, in accordance with the City Council Rule 2.2, in the absence of the Council President and Vice President, a President Pro Tem must be chosen from among the committee chairs. So at this point, I hereby declare nominations open for-
Move to nominate, Councilor Green.
Second.
I vote to nominate Councilor Deenatali.
Second.
Okay, any other names to be put in? Okay. Can I get a motion to close nominations?
Move to close.
Motion closed.
Second.
Okay, there's no, I'll do this by roll call vote. Councilor Kuchar.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is this to close?
Yes, oh, yes.
Just to close.
Sorry.
Councilor Cragan.
Uh, yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squallia.
Aye.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Okay, declare nominations closed. When I call your name, please state the name of the Councilor for whom you are voting. Councilor Kuchar.
Councilor Deenatali.
Councilor Cragan.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Cruz.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Deenatali.
Councilor Deenatali.
Councilor Fleming.
Councilor Deenatali.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Schultz.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Squallia.
Councilor Green.
Councilor Boishman.
Uh, Councilor Green.
Vote of six to three, Councilor Green. Councilor Pro Tem. Thank you. The public has been advised to contact the City Clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None have been brought to our attention. If there is any member of the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kuchar.
Thank you, Councilor Green. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening, uh, we took up two new appointments, permanent full-time firefighters, uh, Mr. Alessandro A. Chaconi and Jerry J. Kimber. Both were unanimous.
Move to approve the report.
Second.
On the motion.
Speaking on the motion, Councilor Boishman.
May I ask the Fire Chief one question?
Of course.
Chief, did bring your number up to what, 81 now?
Eighty-one.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the City Clerk will conduct the swearing-in.
Excuse me?
City Clerk's going to do the swearing-in.
Yeah, get approved. It was on the motion. I hope. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
Into the best of my knowledge and ability-
Into the best of my knowledge and ability-
Perform and discharge-
Perform and discharge-
All duties.
All duties.
In coming upon me as a permanent firefighter.
As a permanent firefighter.
For the city of Pittsburgh. For the city of Pittsburgh. For the home of God. For the home of God. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Thank you, Alessandro. Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, if there's any family members who would like to take pictures, now is your opportunity to do so. Take as much time as you need.
Yeah. What about the homeless? I have no idea what it's talking, you wouldn't tell me. You got an email the first thing Monday morning I wake up. I didn't know you, I'm glad I didn't. Have a well. I had to make that message. You forward me the message, you know, get on. He said, uh, markets took care of it. Okay, you forward me the message to let me know. Yeah, he contacted me like three weeks ago before you were sworn in. And he told me he messaged me when I was a toddler. He said, I wasn't a toddler. No, he reached out to me like right after Christmas, before you were even sworn in. There's something going on in Upland Street that I just sent a text to Martin and said, can you send- I think he dropped, I don't know, maybe he sent it to the doctor before I was in work, but I never- I said to him, I remember that conversation last year. But he emailed me, but she doesn't have an ID. And he didn't tell me what he is. I said to him, he's not seen a few, but he doesn't have a city ID either, so if he did try to get in, he was- Hold on, okay. Oh, that's a great one. Seventy years ago, and I got a rate of being in the market. He said, that was the way we've been talking here, don't you represent the people? Heavy snow. Yeah, I know this. I went to- I was like- Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't expect it. They had left her alone. I said, yeah. I emailed it, I was like, yeah, it's not gonna get- It's been survived. Yeah. But yeah, the first email I got from him was- If you want, I'll send him a message. You know, I talked to him and he's, he's already made it. No, no. I didn't see it. I didn't see it. I didn't see it. Bye. Bye, family, thank you. I see the peace. I will. So, um, that's what we have to do. I'm going to walk into an initiation ceremony. I already made an appointment, he's always a child. I'm doing this. Well, yeah, I know, it's going to happen. I mean, I know when it's going to happen, I can't wait. I mean, I was like, I'm going to go, I'm going to go. I always, I'm not going to talk to you, I'm going to board you. If it's, if it's suddenly called me or, or the message, I will keep you in the work block. If they call me and write and say that- Ooh, we got a fire truck. Ooh, fancy. Or the message is just, say, I'm giving you the word. That's what I do. But, um, in this case, you won't even answer. So I'm like, I'm like, it's not- Oh, it's so exciting.
All right, we're going to continue on.
I mean, I'm going to go. I did this one. It's pretty, it's small. Everybody is getting quite frank now with all these people.
All right, we're going to proceed with our, we're going to proceed with our council meeting. Next, we'll hear a report on the Council on Records. The report of the records from our last City Council meeting appear to be in order. Can I have a motion to approve the-
So moved.
Report of records.
So moved.
Second.
Under the presentation. Under the presentation. Now, we have a special presentation, the Substance Abuse Coordinator Sue Christensen and the Board of Health Director Steve Curry, to introduce our new street outreach workers, Keith Barnaby and Kim French, and to discuss the homeless outreach program. Hi, Mr. Curry.
Good evening, Councilors. It's a pleasure for me to be able to introduce to you Mr. Barnaby and Ms. French, our brand new outreach coordinators. I'd also like to introduce our Substance Abuse Coordinator, who's been with us for a couple of years now, and that's Susan Christensen, doing excellent job in the department while we take on COVID. Not a lot of dedication and support from the department, so she's done a lot of great work on her own. But I'd like to talk about the CDC's overdose data to action program, which is also known as the OD2A program. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Abuse Addiction Services, otherwise known as BSAS, awarded funding to the City of Fitchburg Health Department to build upon work of the Massachusetts Opioid Addiction Prevention Collaborative, which was known as MOPSI earlier, with a more specific scope. The City of Fitchburg, with guidance from BSAS, developed a logic model intended to direct their strategy to specify individuals in Fitchburg experiencing homelessness and housing inability who are at greater risk for experiencing fatal and non-fatal overdoses. The OD2A scope of work is very limited, reducing overdoses and reducing deaths from overdoses. While the promotion of harm reduction methods such as naloxone distribution are a priority, the trust built with individuals has resulted in the ability to offer other access to other services resulting in ancillary positive outcomes. Two outreach workers have been contracted with to provide these services and to fulfill the goals of the ODA, OD2A. Keith works on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Kim works on Wednesdays. During periods of extreme weather, or when the United Way activates the emergency shelter program, we have authorized Kim and Keith to work to help connect folks to shelter when they most need it. The Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, or BSAS, and CDC have expressed their support for outcomes generated by Sue's program created within the Health Department and the implementation of OD2A. BSAS has in fact been promoting the Fitchburg Interagency Team Meeting as an example of best practices within the confines of the scope of work. Coordination of care between local partners with whom OD2A mostly closely interacts is an example of allowing for efficient and effective referrals when they are sought by individuals. Local providers, the local providers are agencies who collaborate to increase the access for the homelessness, to obtain enhanced services, and include, see it, and they include the CHC, which is our Health Connection Restoration Recovery, MACH, of Fitchburg, the Fitchburg Comprehensive Treatment Center, the Salvation Army, Yama, and a whole slew of others. The OD2A grant has two more years at $100,000 per year. Billing is for services provided and supplies purchased and must only be within the scope of work that's approved by the DPH BSAS. In December, we also received $28,000 from the CDBG funding, which enabled us to contract with Kim French and also to purchase supplies through the period ending to the end of this fiscal year. Some of the outreach data that has happened since July 1st to the end of 2021, 2,875 contacts with individuals on the streets, and that is a duplicate count, which is a very impressive number. 1,588 are male, 1,087 are female. There have been 31 folks connected to permanent shelter, 55 folks admitted to detox, 13 of those folks were transported directly, 137 have been connected directly to supported services, 1,256 have received bus passes, 231 have received clothing vouchers in a program that we have developed with, or Sue developed with the Salvation Army, and 619 naloxone kits have been distributed. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Barnaby and Mr. French, uh, Ms. French, who have done a tremendous job, and we will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Also, sue may join us. Good evening, Councilors.
Good evening. Welcome. Mr. Barnaby, do you want to tell us a little bit about you as an individual and the work that you've done in this program?
Sure, sure. I mean, this is nothing that just happened overnight. I've been in the field now for eight years. I started off, went back to school, got what's called a KDAC, stands for Certified Drug Alcohol Counselor. I spent three years working in a local methadone program, worked with hundreds and hundreds of folks, and in 2018, I ended up working with an organization on Worcester called AIDS Project Worcester. And during that time, I did a few different roles. I worked with, I did the post overdose, that's a post overdose follow-up with several police departments. One was Worcester, I did Gardner, I did Winchton, we just contracted Ashfordham recently. I also did what's called OEND, that stands for Overdose Education Narcan Distribution. And that's where I started doing Narcan trainings. I did well over 300 trainings in the course of about two years. I probably interacted with thousands, at least a thousand people, I think, within this community. And really, I think that's during my time as a case manager in the methadone program and then, and then working in the OAND and meeting all these organizations and all the agencies that are in this community, is where I started to really form some good relationships and connections with some of these agencies. During that time, one of my other roles was street outreach, and, and that's when I started doing that in about 2018. And I noticed, you know, I had a little bit of funding from APW at the time, getting money from DPH, and just trying to do some different things on the streets, and I did see like a lot of gaps in service out here. And I did see a lot of folks not getting help that they needed, and I thought, why not take the wonderful agencies and all the people we got working right here and find a way to connect people in easier? And the way we try to really do it is, you know, when you're on the streets here, you're dealing with the most vulnerable, most at-risk population there is. You know, certainly for the behaviors you're engaging and the drugs that are on these streets out here. And it's very volatile, and you've got to be able to move quickly. I think when, when somebody wants to go to treatment, I got about a half hour window to maybe make that call happen. I've got connections in everyone, every single detox locally. We were able to get a grant through APW to provide transportation to detox anywhere in Massachusetts that we utilize on the street here. I could transport somebody in real time, directly off the streets, which is good. I put somebody in detox this morning, as a matter of fact. But since October 2020, well over 100 people got into detox on the street in real time, which, when you're dealing, when you're in that situation, you've got to be able to think quick out here, and you've got to be able to react quick and get people where they need to go quickly. And so far, we've been fairly successful at doing that. It's, you know, really, it's getting that trust of the population out here. And for me, it's, it's easy to do. I do what I say, and I say what I do. I have all the integrity of the world, good boundaries, good ethics, and I'm always going to leave that person safer than the way I found them. The name of the game for me out here is keep them alive. If I can keep them alive, I have a chance. If we lose them to an overdose, I got a 0% chance. And there are so many drugs on this street out here today. Fentanyl is in every drug that's on the streets out here. It's in your cocaine, it's in your meth, it's in your crack. Fentanyl is everywhere, you know, so it's extremely dangerous out here, and I feel blessed to even be part of the team and be able to do the work we do. This is feeling like a dream for my, for me come true, to do the work, and I'm happy to do it.
Thank you for that.
Any questions you might have?
We'll take questions afterwards. Ms. French, again, same question to you. Would you like to tell us a little bit about you and then the specific, specifics of the work that you do in this area?
Sure. So I'm Kim French. This is my 10th year in the field. I started off working at Our Father's House. I worked there for about six years, and I absolutely fell in love with the population, and I realized, you know, a lot of people just want someone to listen to them, whether it's, you know, about their day, whether they're expecting something or an appointment or, you know, just the anxiety of going for job interviews and housing interviews and things like that, and it just, I just knew I wanted to do more. And I also went to school and got my KDAC. I learned everything I possibly can. I've worked at other agencies such as SMOK. I currently still work at Catholic Charities, and it's a Lemonster Women's Program. I've worked, I've also worked at AIDS Project Worcester, just as much education as I possibly could in the field to learn how to help these people, what do these people need, how can we meet them where they're at? And just like Keith said, good ethics and good boundaries, having the same goals as keeping people alive, and that's really what it is, giving people a chance. Even if it's a second, third, or fourth chance, it's still, you know, a chance.
Thank you for your commitment. I have Councilor Boishman ahead of you, Councilor Squallia. Councilor Boishman.
I yield the chair to Councilor Squallia for now, then I'll talk later.
Okay. Councilor Squallia.
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation, Director Curry, and hearing from our new street outreach team, and I really appreciate that we have Keith Barnaby, who I've met on numerous occasions at, I think I got a Narcan training from you, and I just, I love, I appreciate your candor and your energy and your knowledge of, you know, and your enthusiasm for, for trying to help our community. And then, Ms. French, it's great to meet you, and I really appreciate having, you know, a female to help with our vulnerable population, our vulnerable homeless population, and the experience you have at Our Father's House is fantastic, so it's nice to see that we have that kind of still connection to, to help our vulnerable population. I do have a question about the shelters. Director Curry, you noted that they will be manning the shelters when the, it's a cold snap? Like, for example, we just had a cold snap at the senior centers that you were referring to? So I had one, I had a few questions from the community asking, what do the homeless or people without shelter do at night when these facilities close, like after 4:00 PM?
What do the folks do from the shelters when they close at 4:00?
Yeah, so it's, it's cold, so we open up a warming center at the senior center or at the Salvation Army, and what, what do people do after that point?
So, I mean, after that, I mean, I think most people are aware there's, there's two shelters. The one's in Lemonster, stays in, that's run by SMOK. The other one is Our Father's House in Fitchburg. I can tell you right now, both are full, both have been full for a while, and even today, they hit the button, I call it the button, but it's United Way actually hits, they send an urgent notice out saying that the weather's going to get to a certain degree at temperature, or it's going to be a weather-related event. In that, in that case, what happens is open up funds. And so what they'll start to do is obviously throw them in the shelter first, if they can, if they want to. Shelter's being both full, it's hotels. And so they're getting in place into the hotel, could be Days Inn, could be Motel 6, a lot of times is where they're going to go. And it's just going to be for that, whatever the United Way decides. Today, they hit it for today and tomorrow. And so that's basically what happens. When that gets lifted, they're back out into the street out there. And I can tell you that with both shelters full, I've seen the numbers come down slightly. This past summer was the most numbers I've ever seen in, in this community since I've started doing this work. But I'm happy to say they come down a little bit, and we're right around 100 mark, I got about 100 folks. Homeless, unstablely housed, or at risk of, I got a lot of folks living in cars, you know, maybe in buildings or wherever they're going to go, but those numbers have come down. But that's basically what happens, they go into a hotel room for the night, so.
And for those people that are in need of a shelter, who do they contact?
So, there's a, there's a whole contact list. Really, a lot of it goes through Janessa McQuade, who works with the Lemonster Police Addiction Outreach Program in Lemonster, but you also got other players out here. So you're going to have Salvation Army, that's Lynette Valentine, you got Ginny's, you've got Spanish American Center, you got MACH, and that's going to take care of the Twin Cities. After that, you're going to go to the Gardner, and you're in the CAC, and the YMCA is up that way. But most, most everybody going through the shelters is going through Janessa McQuade at this time.
Janessa McQuade, so is that like the central contact point?
I think I call her maybe the gatekeeper, so to speak, because she kind of decides who comes in, who goes out, and all that kind of stuff. There's challenges with this as well. I got a lot of folks out here without IDs. It's the number one barrier. It's the first place I'm going to start when I, when I'm working with somebody out there on the streets, I've got to get an ID to get you plugged into services. And so that's a barrier right here, and, and so I'm, we're trying to actually work through that. I got some meetings set up with United Way, see if we can make this process better, easier. When I'm working with this, this population, I find the easier the better. If we could streamline this and make it easy, we're going to have better outcomes, just based on the population that we're working with. So try to make it a little bit better than it is, if we can.
Great. If you can share your contact information with Councilors, I know, I know we get a lot of requests for housing or assistance from, from different, from different people, so it'd be great to be able to reach out to you. Now, I have one more question about the funding. Director Curry, you noted that we, it's $100,000 a year, and we have two years of funding, and we also supplement that with the $28,000 from the CDBG. Is that, that $200,000 grant, that's something we already have? What are we looking at for our street outreach team, looking into the future financially to be able to support this?
Well, that's a very good question. Part of this whole strategy is to develop sustainability. We hope there'll be other grants through the Department of Public Health with the success of this program, and hopefully, MOPSI and SAPSI have gone on for several years now, we hope the same will happen with OD2A, and it certainly does look like that at this time.
All right. Thank you, that's all I have. Councilor Boishman.
My question's for Mr. Curry first. Steve, you said on the OD2A, go back to 100,000. Does every community get 100,000 in the Commonwealth?
No. This, this was a grant application process.
Well, you applied for a grant.
That's correct.
So we're going to start the program here. Is that what we're saying?
Well, we've actually started the program several years ago through the opioid collaboration and the substance abuse prevention collaboration. This is more of a specific scope geared at homelessness and overdose and fatalities.
All right. My question to Mr. French here, my question to you, sir, is, you said a couple of times, I heard you always say a couple of times that if you give them a chance, two or three times, one of you said that. My question is, why doesn't, if somebody's on the heavy stuff, and we know they pass out, and we get the firemen involved, the police department, we bring them to the hospital, they can sign themselves out. Why doesn't anybody, I don't know if I'm saying the right terminology, file a Chapter 35 or a Chapter 12, because these, these people, the person that's on the, on the drugs or substance abuse are not really thinking straight. So basically, they're not, they're not okay. And what I don't understand is how the courts can say, yeah, you got a problem, yeah, you can think on your own, and then let you out, and then the police are right there backing them up at the fire department, and we're right back to the same square one that we're at. Why isn't that being done?
It's a great question, and thank you for that. I think really the challenge is here, there's a thousand ways to get somebody into recovery. I got to figure out which one's going to work for them. This is not a one size fits all, and what's going to work for one's not going to work for another. When you talk about like second, third chances, it's not really chances that we're giving somebody on the street here, it's, it's like two or three times I put somebody in the detox, and I've done this. I've had one gentleman, and he went to detox three times in one month, and it becomes an issue. And again, these are learning moments, and you try to use it as a learning moment and try to, try to plant some seeds and try to get them to turn the next chapter here. I know you're talking about Section 35s. I'm not even against Section 35s when it's appropriate. And it's not, again, this is not a one size fits all either, when it comes to a Section 35, but a lot of times, those have to be filed through the courts, through the family. And if they're not a family, it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a police officer or firefighter or something like that, somebody in the community, but again, you've got to find what's going to work for the individual. I'm aware, the key out here really is to connect. Can you connect to somebody that's on those streets? I seem to be pretty good at it. I'm, I'm pretty good at connecting with folks on the streets. That's step one. Step two, keep them engaged. Trickier. One day on the streets is kind of like one weekend in our life, I think. It goes pretty fast out there. There's a lot of things that go on, and they might be hot, hot, hot in the morning, and
All right. Thank you, that's all I have. Counselor Boeschmann.
My question's for Mr. Currie first. Steve, you said on the OD2A, go back to 100,000. Does every community get 100,000 in the Commonwealth?
No. This was a grant application process.
Well, you applied for a grant.
That's correct.
So we're going to start the program here? Is that what we're saying?
Well, we've actually started the program several years ago through the opioid collaboration and the substance abuse prevention collaboration. This is more of a specific scope geared at homelessness and overdose and fatalities.
All right. My question to Mr. French here. My question to you, sir, is, you said a couple of ti, I heard you always say a couple of times that if you give them a chance, two or three times, why don't you say that? My question is, why doesn't, if somebody's on the heavy stuff, and we know they pass out, and we get the firemen involved, the police department, we bring them to the hospital, they can sign themselves out. Why doesn't anybody, I don't know if I'm saying the right terminology, file a Chapter 35 or a Chapter 12? Because these people, the person that's on the drugs, the substance abuse, are not really thinking straight. So basically, they're not, they're not okay. And what I don't understand is how the courts can say, yeah, you've got a problem, yeah, you can think on your own, and then let you out, and then the police are right there backing them up at the fire department, and we're right back to the same square one that we're at. Why isn't that being done?
It's a great question, and thank you for that. I think really the challenge is here, there's a thousand ways to get somebody into recovery. I've got to figure out which one's going to work for them. This is not a one-size-fits-all. And what's going to work for one's not going to work for another. When you talk about like second, third chances, it's not really chances that we're giving somebody on the street here, it's like two or three times I put somebody into detox. And I've done this. I've had one gentleman, and he went to detox three times in one month. And it becomes an issue. And again, these are learning moments, and you try to use it as a learning moment, and try to, try to plant some seeds and try to get him to turn the next chapter here. I know you're talking about Section 35s. I'm not even against Section 35s when it's appropriate. And it's not, again, this is not a one-size-fits-all either, when it comes to a Section 35, but a lot of times, those have to be filed through the courts, through the family. And if they're not a family, it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a police officer, firefighter, or something like that, somebody in the community. But again, you've got to find what's going to work for the individual. I'm aware, the key out here really is to connect. Can you connect to somebody that's on those streets? I seem to be pretty good at it. I'm pretty good at connecting with folks on the streets. That's step one. Step two, keep them engaged. Trickier. One day on the streets is kind of like one week in our life, I think. It goes pretty fast out there. There's a lot of things that go on, and they might be hot, hot, hot in the morning, and they want to get out of here, and then something better came along, and that's okay. I'm not here to judge you, I'm not here to shame you, I'm only here to help you. You know, and that's, I think, what they understand on the streets, is that we're only here to help you, when you want help. And if I can't help you, that's okay. I'm still going to make sure you got Narcan, I'm still going to make sure you're safe, and I'm going to try to maybe plant a few seeds in there so that hopefully, down the road, we're going to make this thing turn and change. That's what we try to do here. I hope I answered your question.
Well, my question is this. You said there's about 100 people homeless. When did that all change? Because the last time when I was working with the previous administration, we went out on the road, and I think the most we found were one or two. And these people, the people that were homeless, wanted to be homeless, and they didn't want to go into a shelter anywhere.
I actually keep pretty good data. I've been keeping data for like seven years, well, not seven years, about five years, since I was at APW, I had to keep data. So I kind of keep a census of the folks that we're helping out here, and I have a lot of their information and stuff. Driving around the city, I don't think you're going to see all the homeless. A lot of times you drive around the city, you're not going to see homeless. You're going to see them maybe walking around, maybe panhandling, maybe doing something along those lines. But you've got to kind of go into the places where the folks are. And driving around a car's not going to do it, you're going to have to, it's going to be under the bridges. It's going to, every bridge in Fitchburg has usually somebody that's been there or is there right now. So think about that, next time you drive around Fitchburg, every single bridge has somebody or something down there. There are some food cabins in the woods. You've got abandoned buildings, you've got places, you've got cars, you've got alleyways, you've got stairways, you've got hallways. If it's heated in the winter, they're going to go there. So my point is, just because you don't see it, they're out there, they're out there. And I've got a lot of folks out the street right now, tonight, that are having a hard time getting into the shelter tonight because of bed availability and stuff, so.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is, I didn't drive around, we actually literally walked around.
Sure.
It was me and a couple of other young men, and it was Kevin McLean, he was in, and there were other people that volunteered, so we can get ahead count. But my problem, and everybody knows my problem, I have no problem helping people, I want to make that very, very clear, I'm very kind of rough. My, I'm more concerned about the people of Fitchburg. I'm not concerned, and I've said it numerous times at meetings, of other communities' problems, and we're building it to bring them here. That's my problem that I have. And you may say, gee, you're awful cold. I'm not cold. But we bring the problems here, and everybody that wants to help, they all go home. And the people of Fitchburg have to see the problems 24/7. And that's my problem. You know, I'll go out and help anybody in the city of Fitchburg. But when we start, when I did it that time, they were looking for help, and I asked a question, and one guy, and I'll never forget it, he was younger than me, healthier than me, and he was from Boston. You know what I mean? So we build it, they come. And they don't like it when they say that, but that's how I feel. I'm here to help the people of Fitchburg, not to, at the communities around us, which given us money to help out. Okay, all fine and dandy, but they all don't give us money, they say, you're on your own, pals, take care of yourself. And that's the problem I have. You know? And I'm sorry if you think I'm cold, I'm not.
Oh, no.
I've got a heart to go, but I just don't like to say to come on to Fitchburg, because it doesn't work that way. And that's how I feel about the whole thing.
I completely, just make a comment real quick, if I can. I understand what you're saying, I don't really think the creation of a program like this is going to be a draw to folks. The folks are already here, the folks have been here, and they're going to continue coming here, because you've got a few issues here. One, you have the only shelter in Northwestern County, Our Father's House. You have an enormous amount of drugs on these streets. You have a very large sex worker industry in the city of Fitchburg. There's a lot of reasons why folks might come to Fitchburg. Is everybody I help from the city of Fitchburg? I don't know, but I know on the day that I see them, they are in the city of Fitchburg, and I'm going to help them. And that is a difference with one of the things that we do out here, we're non-selective. I don't pick and choose who I help, everybody gets help on these streets. And that's something that needs to be, happen out in this, in this community, for sure, because I've seen a lot of times where it's selective. He gets help, she doesn't, we don't do that. But again, I understand what you're saying, I just don't think this would be a draw for folks to come to Fitchburg. They're drawn to Fitchburg for a lot of reasons, but I don't think that's one of them. I respectfully just disagree, that's all.
Counselor Fleming.
Well, I think you just answered one of my questions. I was curious as why we're seeing an increase of out-of-towners coming in to Fitchburg and, but why is there an increase in general? You said you're seeing more homelessness than you have in recent years. Is there data to support why that's happening?
I think seeing like the last year, especially in the summertime this past year here, you could relate a lot of that to COVID, is what I think. So in 2020, obviously, everything shut down, there's no access to services, and these numbers kind of grew. And then you have eviction moratoriums that ended, and you've got people getting evicted, and if I could find them before they got evicted, I could probably be, help them a little bit better, but I'm usually getting them after they got evicted. They're living out of a car, that's usually the first step, and when the car goes, then they're going to be outside. Is there a real reason? I mean, I just like to think COVID is the reason why we had like a real burst of numbers, because I had well over about 140, 150 on my census over the summer, but we're down to like 100 now. And I, a lot of folks, you know, we've got a good number of folks here out of the city and into treatment, three of those being sex workers, by the way, that we've gotten off the streets. And what we also try to do is support them in their recovery as well. Stay in contact with them, a lot of folks don't even have somebody to check in with and show what they're doing, and we just try to be supportive in that way, try to help get IDs, get jobs, get back into life, and get back into society, you know? It's, it's a tricky business out here, it really is, and we've got to help everybody, though, everybody needs help. Go ahead.
I still had another question. So when you say they're coming from out-of-town, are they coming from the next town? Are they coming from Boston? Are they coming from Beverly? Are they coming from the Cape? Where are they?
Mostly, I see them from out-of-state, to be honest with you. Texas, North Carolina, Vermont, New Hampshire. I'm just, I'm just looking in my head real quick. And usually, the first question when I find somebody new is, what brings you to Fitchburg? Like, why are you here? What brings you here? And typically, the answer is, it's like a one-family member, it's a cousin, it's an aunt, it's somebody that they knew that's here, and they just, they need help navigating their way around, you know, and again, we try to help them and get them in and get them out, you know?
So they come here because there's a family member?
Yeah, typically, it's what I see.
But the family member isn't helping them, they're choosing to live on the street?
You know what I think happens, is a lot of times a family member offers them to come, and they try to help them, but it's frustrating, and maybe they don't want to help them no more, you know, and then I end up finding them. So I think their intentions were good in the beginning, but addiction, addiction's a, it's a ugly, ugly disease, it really is, and it's difficult.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Craigin.
Thank you. This was a very compelling presentation, and I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit about the, the kind of the age levels of folks that you see. We generally have been living with the statistic that some 500 or so students in our schools are homeless, of our, all of our students, which is around 5,200. So I'm wondering, you know, one, are you dealing with the sort of 18 to 25, and the, or 20, you know, 24 to 35? Or are you dealing with, you know, single parents, or is it just a whole constellation?
Short answer is all the above. But more specifically, I think the 18 to 24 has really come down. You know, that number seems to be shrinking, when I'm, when I'm looking at data. What is really kind of alarming to me is that they're getting older, right? And so I think the majority, the lion's share of the folks is going to be that, that 25 to say 55 category range. But I've also got folks out here in their 60s, I've got 70s. And as of two weeks ago, we had an 86-year-old out here that was incarcerated for 41 years and homeless on these streets. And again, how do you help somebody in that position? I've had families from out of the country. I had a whole family of four, two kids, living in Motel Six, they were from Uruguay. They're here, undocumented. What do you do with somebody undocumented? That's, again, that's a challenge. And thankfully, I know a lot of great people in this area, in this community, that do the work, and usually, if I don't have the answer, I know somebody who does. So, I mean, we're able to get them where they need to go, but that's a, I really don't want to see children out here, to be honest with you. I mean, it's kind of alarming to see that, so.
A quick follow-up, which is, given that there is this range of ages, between the, between the rehab and the next step, I know that there are layers of help, but someone goes through their rehab time, and then they're released, and where is there for them to be? I know Fitchburg Library is open until 8 o'clock, there are other, you know, certainly the college campus has, you know, doors that you can walk into, but what do we have programmatically to help people stay sober? Maybe that's a question for Sue.
Yeah, what restoration recovery, which is now operating on the platform, and they are open daily.
Sue, can you come to the podium so you can, so it's amplified?
Restoration Recovery, which is located up in the old United Neighbors of Fitchburg Building. They are open daily. People can go in, get help with job applications, hook up with services. They're there to help people in that situation, to kind of connect them to the resources they need, once they get out of treatment or when they're thinking about going in. So that's a, it's a very big plus in our community.
Thank you.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Mr. Barnaby, I don't want you to take what I'm going to say as criticism, but you made a comment about what draws people to this city about, with homelessness. You mentioned sex workers, drugs. Are there sex workers and drugs in Lemonster?
Sure.
Worcester?
Sure.
Are there homeless in those locations?
Not as much as we have here, but I understand what you're saying.
I take it, I guess I take it personally, and not that I'm trying to deny the facts on the ground, but this city has a poor reputation for putting itself down a lot, and we're on a resurgence right now. And the statements you made tonight are not really reflective of what the statements we have received from the police and from the crime statistics that we get from them every year. In fact, our crime overall is down record lows in the last decade. And that includes sex workers and drugs. So I have people at home listening to this and thinking, we're a haven for homelessness because we have prostitution and drugs, as if no other community has those things. And it goes to my central concern, I've been here 16 years, the problem I see it is that all these other communities don't shoulder any weight. They push their problems, or not problems, but their societal issues, onto this city. Lemonster doesn't do anything, Lunenburg, Gardner, they don't do even a tenth of what we do. It is a regional problem. You know, I hear comments made about Fitchburg, and you just said, sir, earlier correctly, that most of these people aren't even from the state.
No, most, I didn't say that.
You said that they're out of state.
There's a select few, and it's not that, not the majority, it's certainly an exception, not the norm.
Are the majority residents of this city that become homeless?
I don't check for residency, I check, I just help people.
So we don't know where they're coming from?
No, you don't.
Okay.
But they're here, they're in this town.
I understand that they're here, but some people, I'm not saying you, some people like to compartmentalize us into a very simple reason why we have these issues. And it's not that simple. And I laugh when I hear some representatives of other communities talk about our city and how we need to do more, when they're doing nothing. So if they're not going to do anything, obviously, that's a draw for these individuals to come here, where there are services. But what confuses me is, you mentioned earlier to Counselor Fleming, that a lot of people that, how many, I'm paraphrasing, a lot or quite a few come here because they're family members?
Sure.
But then you said they come here because of sex crimes and drugs.
It's all of the above, I think, I mean.
Okay, but, I mean, you don't really have an, you don't have a, you don't have an evidentiary listing on you, on you that says, this is exactly why this is happening. Their generality you're making, right, based on your statements?
It's my opinions, I think, my opinion.
They're your opinions, okay.
Because I'm on the street and I see it on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, but if someone's coming here because they have a family member, it's not because there's prostitution and drugs.
I think you're taking my words out of context a little bit here, I mean, I gave a couple examples of some reasons why folks might come here.
I have no doubt there's, that's a couple of reasons probably, but I am ultra-sensitive to statements like that, sir, and no disrespect to you, because I've been here through the worst time of this city's period, 2008, when we had, the city was like literally dark, there was no lights on, we were in the doldrums. We've come a long way in 14 years, and our crime statistics have been phenomenal. And I guess I'm a cheerleader. I'm not telling you to tell us what we want to hear or to sugarcoat over our issues, but all too often, I have to hear about the issues with this city, and that's why we have these problems, but there's more context beyond that that doesn't get said. It just acts like Fitchburg, and I'm not saying you said this, but Fitchburg, riddled with problems, that's why they come here, everywhere else. No such thing. They all just come here because we've got, we've got it on the map. And I get defensive because we have come a long way, and we don't do enough to promote this city. It doesn't mean we hide our eye, we close our eyes to the realities that we face elsewhere. We have issues in this city, there's no doubt about it, but statements made like that give the impression that this city is unique than the rest, that we attract an element that no other community does, because we have these issues in the city, as if no other community doesn't. I'm not saying you said that specifically, but that's the interpretation, because some people are going to take what you said tonight, and they're going to do backflips over it, because they don't like this city. And this is giving them more reason to say, we're no good. Okay? I happen to think we're very good, because as you pointed out, we're the only community in this region that does anything about this problem. No one else does. And I'd like to see if they do. You said we're the only shelter in Northwestern County? That says it right there. Lemonster does nothing. Gardner does nothing. And then these people see that, and they come here. And we welcome them. And that's why you're here, to help out. These other communities don't lift a finger, and if they do, I'd love them to tell me how they do it, because I haven't seen anything, maybe I'm ignorant, I don't know. So you can tell I get very defensive about this, because 14, 15 years ago, we had crime through the roof, we had drugs through the roof. It's not the case right now. The stats do not point to that anymore. We are at historic lows. Doesn't mean they don't exist still, but I just want to, I'm a big nitpicker with context. I mean, that wasn't your intent, I know that. But people are going to hear that, and they're just going to focus on that one statement, and not think of anything else. And I just wanted to come forward with that, not because of who I'm related to, but because I'm invested here myself. I've been here for 39 years, served in this city government for 18. And I just can't let statements like that go without putting more context behind it. I'm not saying they don't exist, I'm just saying, there needs to be more context. And whether that was the intent or not, I'm sure it wasn't, it doesn't come across good, because there are some people who love that you just said that, they love it, because they want us to fail. And I'm not going to let that happen. And I know you don't want us to fail. So that's from 18 years of experience doing this. I've got a lot of background of this city. And if we're having criticisms of this city today, fair enough, but we've got to put it in context. We're way ahead of where we used to be. And I would argue that part of the reason why we have a homelessness problem in the city is because other communities do zilch to assist. So that's why they come here. So I put it on their backs. You, sir, need help. You need help from those other locations. They don't lift a finger because they know we're going to do it. Well, I've had it with that. Thank you.
I do apologize if my comments came out that way, but I've been in this community for 47 years myself, born and raised in this community, I love this community. I love this community. And again, I'm just trying to just kind of state some things that I see going on out here. Not disparaging on the city of Fitchburg by any means, but I love this community.
I'm not doubting your experience, sir, and I'm not doubting that what you said isn't true. But people are going to listen to that and say, that's the only reason. We got to put everything in context, in a big envelope here. That's all I'm saying. I didn't want to get that lost in the mix. Because you've got a lot of stuff to bring to the table, and you've got a lot of good stuff to say, and I just wanted to make sure I make that clear to the viewing public, that there are other reasons, as you've stated, individuals come here. And the problems that we have that may attract some people here, also are had in other communities who do less than zero with those problems. So they find their way here because they know you're here. They know the services we provide. Those other communities don't do that, why would they stay? Because I guess it's our fault as a city. We don't push back on these other communities more to say, this is a regional problem. This is not a Fitchburg problem. So we could use some assistance. You could use some assistance. I don't know where they are. I haven't seen it. Thank you.
So councilors, if I might add very briefly, this presentation was certainly not intended to offend any other department in the city. It was just a, just to discuss the issues. I think things are taken a bit out of context, and we will certainly work with the police department in the near future, as time goes. So it wasn't intended to be offensive whatsoever.
Chief Martin.
Thank you, madam. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I think it's appropriate that I do speak. You know, tonight was about to highlight the efforts put forth by Sue and Steve in bringing this outreach team to the city of Fitchburg. That's what this presentation was about this evening. And I, I'm excited to have an outreach team available. To me, it's just another tool in the toolkit. I think what got out of context tonight was the bigger issue, whether it's homelessness, crime, or all of that other stuff. Homelessness is a regional issue. Make no mistake about it. What is happening here in the city of Fitchburg is happening in Leominster, it's happening in Gardner, it's happening everywhere. It doesn't put us in a negative light, but when I hear comments about prostitution and drug trafficking, councilor, you're correct. Our crime statistics are the lowest they've been in many years. Doesn't say we don't have a lot of work still to do, but tonight was to outline this effort that we put forth in the city. I look forward to collaborating with Sue and her team. My officers, they're the boots on the ground. They're the ones that are responding to homelessness issues, homelessness problems, drug overdoses. The men and women of the police department are first on scene on every crisis. I have 88 people responding to scenes. They have two. Working together, we're going to create a better project for the city of Fitchburg. But what's important for the viewers to listen to tonight, this is not a Fitchburg issue. This is happening everywhere, and we're addressing it. So I'm excited about the opportunity to address it head-on, but make no mistake about it, this is not unique to Fitchburg. This conversation is happening in city councils across the Commonwealth. And we have made some significant, significant strides here in the city of Fitchburg. Things are the best they've seen, I've seen, in the last 10, 15 years. And I've been doing this for 34 years. So I think the outlook is bright. I think we're putting the right tools in the toolkit to address issues. And tonight was about to highlight something that we brought to the city, not to talk about the negatives. And make no mistake about it, this is not unique to us. This is happening everywhere. Every city and town across the Commonwealth and across this nation. So I applaud Steve Curry for bringing this to the city, Sue Christensen and the team. I look forward to working with them, and I think our residents can only benefit from it. Thank you for your time.
Councilor Green, I had a question.
As, Councilor Schultz, raise his hand. Yeah, you'll be on the list. I would just like to add that if, you know, if we're going to do a program like this, then I want us to be able to come forward and say that we are the gold standard to set these programs in motion, so that our other communities have the proper means and resources to take care of themselves and their community as well. So if somebody has to be the pilot program for it, I'm happy that it's us, and I'm happy that we have many organizations who are partnering together. It's nice, you can't get anything done solo. So it's nice to have the health department, with the police department, with the fire department, with all of our nonprofit agencies that are helping to address it. I think that we're walking or driving around with blinders on if we don't address the issues that are not only before us, but before every community in the Commonwealth and across the United States. So I appreciate the openness and honesty of my colleagues, and to you sitting here listening to the feedback, because it's important that we continue to have these conversations, so that we know what's happening boots on the ground, so that we are enlightened by that information as well, so that we can lend our help and our support when needed. With that being said, Councilor Cruz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend you both, and Sue as well, for taking this challenge on. This is devastating work, and you're there with these people, you know, sometimes again and again. And I want to thank you for not losing sight of the human element. You know, a lot of things are said tonight, but ultimately, these are human beings, and we can't forget that, wherever they're coming from. And I'm incredibly proud that Fitchburg does deal with this problem. I can't speak for other communities, but we do take it on. We do take the responsibility to take care of one another, take care of our fellow human beings. I'm incredibly proud of that. My only question for you guys for clarification, I know that we were actually on Zoom earlier today about opioid addiction, and some things were mentioned about providing support, not just, you know, getting people into detox, but also employment and housing, because those are critical, critical to keep people sober. So if you will just let the city and the council know kind of what you guys are doing to get people employed, and to keep them employed so that they can stay sober.
Sure. One of the programs that we've been using, we use Restoration Recovery to get them plugged into it, is through the Western Housing Authority. It's called the COC Reentry Program. That stands for Continuum of Care. And your only qualification is that you're chronically homeless. And so far, I think there's about a half a dozen that have been approved, which is awesome. But I think the challenge is trying to find an apartment that fits with what they've been approved. I'll give you an example. I've got a couple out here, they're approved, they're $1450 for a two-bedroom. Can't find one. You just cannot find an apartment. And if they do find an apartment, stigma's still out here. Because it's coming through the COC program, I think landlords get a little bit leery and give them somebody a second chance, and that's unfortunate. Housing is always going to be the number one issue, I think, that we're facing out here. You know, once you get somebody into treatment, and follow all the things, and go into like a long-term residential, whatever, but if you don't have a place to live at the end, well, you can't get into one. And another barrier, really, is evictions. If you have an eviction on your record, I don't even know where to start, to be honest with you. Because you got to convince a landlord to give this person a second chance, and actions have consequences, and I understand that. So we just try to navigate that system the best we can, to try to get them in. So that's our best effort right now, is the COC Reentry Program. And I'm hoping that's going to, we work close and close with MACH as well, MACH and RRC, Restoration Recovery, to try to make that happen out here. Other than that, a lot of folks going into like the SMACH programs, you got your rooming houses, but those are completely full now, too. I've got several on waiting lists right now for Hastings Hall, and a couple others here. So housing is a challenge. It's always going to be a challenge.
Thank you very much. I look forward to helping any way in your efforts that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take Councilor Schultz before we take second comments. So Councilor Schultz.
Thank you, Councilor Green. I had a follow-up question for what Councilor Squallia brought up about the after 4:00 p.m. I guess it's a question for Keith. You said that, you know, we have the Days Inn in Leominster, and Our Father's House in Fitchburg, and then you said that when they're full, the United Way has to okay emergency funding, but they've only done it for a couple of days. I know, I guess the same communications that Councilor Squallia gets, that there's some people that are out there that are homeless, and they can't find shelter. Is there another emergency fund that people, that you can tap into? Because I got a communication, there was a couple last week, during that cold spell, that they were left on the street for an evening, and, you know, for an entire night. So I just wonder if there was another emergency fund besides the United Way.
I'm not aware of any other funds that are there, but that funding is up for grabs, not only through Janessa, but some of the other local agencies. So like Our Father's House, you know, David over there, he could get you into a hotel if he had to. Jenny's in the Spanish American Center, the Salvation Army, all of them could kind of do it, but it's all kind of coming out of the same funding. It's coming from the United Way. And my understanding is when that funding's gone, the funding's gone. So they, really, they try to do it really to push the button only to prevent death. You know? And so you see like some of these temperatures in the last few nights here, that would be a good reason to do it. So to my knowledge, I don't have any access to other funds for emergency housing in a storm situation.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for that, Keith.
All set. Councilor Schultz?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Green.
Councilor Squallia.
Thank you. Just going off what Councilor Green had said earlier, again, I'd like to thank you for coming in and giving this presentation to us. And again, thank you for your candor. You know, unless we know what the problems are, we can't work to solve them. So thank you again. But during this conversation, it reminded me of another question I had. And that is, you mentioned, you know, if there's a bridge in Fitchburg, someone's living under it. And I know, I personally have cleaned up, you know, a previous encampment, and, you know, there is human waste, there's needles, there's drug paraphernalia, you know, it's just, it's generally unsafe to clean up. So our Fitchburg DPW no longer has the capacity to do those cleanup sites. You know, how are we looking forward to being able to clean up these sites, so that they are safe for people? And also, you know, moving forward to be able to fund that, to make sure that these places are safe?
So good question, counselor. Thank you for asking that. We are working currently with the Purchasing Department. We are exploring agencies that provide these hazardous waste cleanups. And we are very close to the bidding process to allow for those companies to get on board. So we will hopefully have one by the end of the month, I believe it is. I will check with Purchasing very shortly, but we hope to have somebody in place very shortly.
Thank you. So this is coming out of city funds, right? But this is a regional problem. This is, you know, this is an issue that we're dealing with regionally, and we are paying to clean up this kind of hazardous waste.
So the cleanups would only occur on city property? If the cleanup was on a private property, the property owner would be directed in order to clean up the encampment, so.
Are there, you know, looking at a higher level for funding sources, looking into the future? You know, I was on the call with Senator Markey and Councilor Cruz today. Is that, you know, I spoke with our state senators, our state delegation, there's nothing really there. Is there something that we need to look at, at a federal level, to be able to, you know, help with the aftermath of a lot of the homeless, you know, and substance use activities?
Right now, we've been utilizing, or we plan to utilize, our Clean and Lean Fund. Luckily, we haven't had to utilize all of those funds in the last couple of years. The city has dedicated $40,000 to the Clean and Lean Program, which we used up by December just about every year, when I first took over. But luckily, we have not seen the entire $40,000 spent by half, through the half of a fiscal year, so. We hope to be able to utilize those funds and sustain it for that reason.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Cragan.
Oh, I didn't have a follow-up, but I just did have, really, a salute, because what you're doing is gathering together so many different aspects of law enforcement, of psychology, of substance abuse, of the larger picture of the, you know, the housing crisis. And I know from talking to friends at our, you know, at Goodrich Academy, that the eviction crisis did make a big uptick. So I guess I wanted, can you fine tune? Did you find when the eviction moratorium was lifted in October, between October and the end of the year, did you see more, were there more sort of folks who ordinarily might have been living in an apartment, who then had no recourse? And then?
I will say, yeah, I think I've seen an uptick, but it's not necessarily sometimes in the city of Fitchburg either. Like Walmart, Lunenburg, you got a bunch of people living in cars up in there. Kmart, depending on where they're sleeping, in their car, in the parking lot, could be Leominster or Fitchburg. Again, I think what that really did was drive folks out of their, you know, their housing, and finding them in their own cars. A lot of times, they'll try to stay at a hotel for as long as they can. It's not sustainable, obviously. It's like $2,200 a month at Motel 6. So I mean, that never ends up well. So again, they're trying to, and sometimes you even have the families with the kids. And usually, if that happens, it makes it a little bit easier, because there is some state funding in there, and some emergency assistance to be able to plug families into shelters, and most of those shelters are going to be in the Worcester area and beyond. So. But I guess to answer your question, I see a little bit of an uptick, but not, I think more folks living in their cars, I think, just kind of coming out of that eviction process.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for all you're doing.
If I may add to that, counselor, I know our Housing Division, our Housing Inspectors have seen definitely more complaints and requests for inspections, and many of those were involved with eviction cases. So we have seen an increase from evictions, yes.
Okay. Counselor Boeschmann.
Can I get Steve back up here?
Yeah, Director Curry.
Steve, can you go over those numbers again, before I start asking some questions? The numbers you gave out, like 2,000 some odd?
So the outreach folks have contacted 2875, I'm sorry, it's 2675. Time for some new glasses. 1588 male, 1087 female, 31 were connected to permanent shelter, 56 were admitted to detox, 13 of those folks were transported directly, 137 were connected directly to supported services, 1256 received bus passes, 231 received clothing vouchers, 619 received naloxone. I can give you a copy of this, counselor.
Yeah, I'll take a copy.
I think, Director Curry, that would be helpful for all of us, if you could make that just a communication to all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to inform you something, because you touched something about being homeless and all that. My friend, and I won't give his name, owns an apartment, he had 90 applicants put in for his apartments. He had a couple of them for rent. 90. Out of the 90 applicants, over two-thirds have records of not paying, defaulting, and going to court. So as a landlord, would everything rise in the high cost of any? Would you take a chance? I mean, you've got two-thirds of the people, out of 90, two-thirds, that have been in court for non-payment, or gone to court for not paying their bills, other bills. Really? I mean, I feel bad, and I understand, and I think we have a problem, and I think, and I kept on saying it before, one time at the meeting, we have to teach people how to budget their money. I don't think people know how to budget. When I graduated from high school, I'll be quite frank with you, I didn't know how to budget my money when I got married. I got a paycheck, and I blew it. I just had some people working on me to help me out, but two-thirds of that. And to really, on Councilor De Natale, he said it better than what I did. I'm more point-blank. I just don't like starting programs in Fitchburg. I'll help the people of Fitchburg all the time. I keep on telling these councilors, I'll do anything. But when I start seeing the outsiders come in, I have, I get upset. Because then, it's a reflection of us, and people don't like to hear that. I'm a Christian, I like to help people. And what gets me upset, too, and I'll tell you, and I know you guys are substance abuse, you're the experts, I'm not. When I read the paper, the obituary, and I see somebody passing away at a very young age, and they tell you in the paper, they die from an overdose. You don't think I get upset? I bang the table, and all that? I do. I really do. Like the other day, there was one in the paper, and I was really upset, because of my overdose problem. And their recovery center is in Clayline, and you'd be surprised, I did not fight that, as Mr. Curry, I didn't say a word against it. So I wanted you to know that, too. I may talk harsh, but I didn't fight it. I wanted to help people, because I believe people need help, and need a second chance. But what I just don't understand, and I still, I know I'm repeating myself, Councilor Schultz, I know this, but I don't understand, I call it a chapter 35, if somebody's hooked on drugs, they're not thinking right. And you can't, my wife worked in mental health, and she told me, two weeks, three weeks is not enough time to get cured. It's not enough time. It's out of question. And they need to be in there longer. I'm not an expert. You guys ask, you, Curry's the expert. I'm not. I'm just a regular guy, trying to make a living. But I, and I drive, like Councilor De Natale, drive around town, and I see it. I see different things, and I don't like it. So on this way, you know. And plus, Madam Chair, Mr. Curry, if you could ask, if we could get a report every, say, every quarter, of what's going on in the city of Fitchburg, really, a presentation, not just a piece of paper stating, you know, saying what this is going on, that if they can come in and talk to us every quarter, if you're not, every twice a year, maybe, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Counselor, I'd be happy to bring that up, if you're not going to continue to want to talk for 40 minutes, repeating yourself.
All right.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes, this, Mr. Curry, this is sort of piggybacking on what Councilor Squallia was saying about cleaning up the encampments. You had made a comment about private property. I guess I don't understand if we're, people come into our city for help, and they're setting up camps on private property, the city should be helping those property owners clean up what is happening on their property at no fault of their own.
Well, we would probably, in that situation, we would probably have to take enforcement against the individuals, the property owners, and we most likely could assist, but we would also have to recoup funds and place a lien on the property.
But if it's at no fault of their own, if these people, if, you know, people come into the city because we have the resources for them to come here, and they know they're going to get help.
Property owner has a responsibility to maintain their property. That's...
I understand that, but if somebody has several acres or land, and somebody's setting up a camp, let's say, an acre away from their home, how do they know that unless they're out there, you know, walking their land all the time?
The laws force you to pay attention to your property. It's the way it's always been. I'm not saying I'm tearing a cold shoulder to try to assist, but a property owner is responsible for their own, for their own property, unfortunately, yes.
Do we have many of those situations?
We've, most of them are on private property, actually, most of the encampments. Boy, I don't like that. I agree with you.
All right.
All right. If all have been heard, Counselor Curry, Keith Barnaby, and Kim French, and Sue Christensen also, thank you again for taking time to inform us and educate us on your help. So we appreciate it. And I do think that keeping us informed on a quarterly or, you know, somewhat regular basis would be helpful so that we know if we're making progress, if the numbers are coming down, we're making progress. If the numbers aren't moving or they're going up, then we need additional help. So, and we should be able to reach out to the surrounding communities for that help.
Well, I think a quarterly report is a great idea. So we will, we will take that under advisement and make that happen.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Take care of yourselves, and be safe.
So next on our agenda is the Finance Committee oral report. The meeting of January 18th was canceled due to a lack of quorum, so there will be no report at this time. Orders, Finance.
Move 00422 through 00622 be sent to Finance.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 004 up to and including 006 on to Finance. Do I have a second?
I already said second.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Boeschmann. Petitions, 00722, the Fitchburg...
Move 00722 be sent to a public hearing for February 15th.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Move 00822 and 0922 be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Announcements.
I've got one. Go ahead, go ahead.
Were you speaking on the motion, Counselor Cragan?
I was speaking on the announcements.
Okay. We'll wait until after I have this announcement here. Announcement, Ward 1 City Council Bernie Schultz is hosting a Ward 1 meeting on Wednesday, February 16th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at the Fitchburg Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Fire Chief Dante Suarez and Director of Facilities Russ Cartland will make presentations and then answer questions following their presentations. Counselor Cragan, you had an announcement?
I do. Stratton Players, I'm just going to take this down, my projection isn't ideal. Stratton Players with Putnam Street Lanes, the historic Candlepins Bowling Alley, just a few blocks from us. We are doing a Bowlarama Drama program on Saturday, March 5th, starting at 7:00 p.m. to raise funds for the Stratton Players Community Arts Center, which needs electricity and other infrastructure. That is the building to the right of Fitchburg Public Library. Among the prizes will be given for best costume, highest score, lowest score, most dramatic bowling choreography. We will have raffles and much laughter. Tickets are limited, but they're only $20 each, five players per lane. And if anyone's interested, they should reach out to strattonplayers.com or strattonplayers@gmail.com. And I've got lots of tickets here if anyone would like to help move those. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, we are adjourned.